Call the order of the Scott County Board of Adjustment Meeting on August 14, 2023. First thing on our agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Von Hoff.
Here.
Commissioner Henches.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Next thing is introductions. To my far left is Brad Davis, our planning manager. Our deputy clerk is Rachel Knobush. I see in the audience Marty Schmidt, our zoning manager, Greg Wagner, our principal planner, Nathan Hall, associate planner, and our county commissioner, Tom Wolf. Okay, next thing on the agenda is approval of June 12, 2023 meeting minutes. I assume everybody on the board had a chance to review the minutes. Is there any corrections or additions? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and second to approve the June 12, 2023 minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor say nay. Let's have been approved. Next, our first variance we have is PL number 2023-050, request for variance from a 50-foot bluff setback to install a replacement septic system. Curtis and Cheryl Johnson, applicant and property owner in Section 19 of Blakely Township. And Greg, you're going to give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So on the screen is the site location map of subject property in Section 19 of Blakely Township. This would be located to the west of Highway 169 and then 250th Street West. In this area is County Road 51. Curtis and Cheryl Johnson live at 17006 250th Street West, switching to overhead aerial of the property. So their home is located down here on the southern portion of the property. It was built back in 1979. On the site, you can see kind of one ravine here on the western side of their home. Ravines continue on the north side and partially down the eastern side of their property. So the house is surrounded basically on three sides by bluff areas. Bluff regulations were established in the mid 2000s by the Scott County Watershed Management Organization. And then those standards for setbacks to structures and septic systems were later adopted into the county zoning ordinance back in 2010. The 6.57 acre parcel, as I said, was originally built back in 1979, which is also when the existing septic system was installed. So here's a site map that was provided by the applicants and their septic designer. So existing home garage and then the current system or existing trench system is located north of the home as well as their existing septic tank. The applicants are looking to sell their home. And through the review of that sale process, a compliance inspection was done as part of an agreement between the seller and the buyer. Compliance inspections are not required by Scott County. We do not review sale of properties. So these are typically voluntary or required as part of a sale, which is what we're dealing with here. The system was found to be noncompliant due to separation. Typically, it's separation to groundwater or presence of modeling, which would indicate presence of groundwater. So typically, systems from 30, 40, 50 years ago were not, well, have that same separation problem. So a compliance inspection is required to be submitted to the county within 15 days of being done. So the county was notified of the noncompliance. And the applicants are, as I said, looking to get approval for a new septic system to replace as contingent or as part of the sale of the property. So Scott County ordinance requires a 50-foot setback to structures and to the septic system from the bluff. So on the site map here, you can see the bluff line. And then the new tank would be basically in the same location as the other tank, which would be 23 feet away from the bluff. The sewer line would then run to the west of the home. And at the closest point would be 20 feet to the bluff. And then the new mound system would be located south of the home, which is kind of in the open yard area of the site. So the corner of that system would be 26 feet and to the rock bed absorption area would be 37 feet. So all parts of the septic system do need a variance. So everything's kind of included in this request because none of it meets the 50-foot In your packet, there's a review memo from Environmental Services. They work closely with the applicant's septic designer evaluator. And it was noted in here that while normally we're not supportive of variance requests, especially for like new homes, we do have a lot of these situations where the home was constructed and the septic system was installed before bluff standards were enacted. So we do have a lot of these situations where we have to retroactively find a solution. And basically, what this memo is saying is that this solution here, what they're proposing is the least impactful to the bluff area. And that the, they've talked with the owners and that they understand the risks that are involved with, with the location of the new system. So staffers recommending approval of the request. I did get a copy right ahead of the meeting that I made a copy for all of you from Blakely Township where they heard this request on August 1 and also recommended approval. I would stand for any questions. The current owners and their septic evaluator here also, if you would have any questions for them.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, any questions from the board? Go ahead.
What was the original reason for the 50-foot setback from bluff areas for septic tanks?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, so when the rules were initially enacted, it was actually only like 30 feet. So this is in the mid 2000s. Essentially, that bluff areas continue to recede over time. I mean, they're natural drainage areas, so over time, they just continue to grow and expand. So we had some situations, one in Blakely and a couple others along Sand Creek, where structures were just being put too close to ravine areas and erosion happens and sometimes the bluff fails. So to help protect people from decisions that might be harmful to themselves, the, originally the Watershed Management Organization and then Scott County decided, with the support of the townships, decided it was important to enact setbacks that would keep structures and septic systems further away from areas that are potentially highly erodible.
And if I could, Mr. Chair, so saying all that, then I'm just going to repeat what you said. You've gone ahead and analyzed this and you and the staff approved this, right?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, yeah, our environmental services, who mainly deals with septic, and our natural resources department, they're actually under the same department. They've looked at this. They feel that this is the best solution for an issue that we have an existing home. There aren't many other good solutions here, so this is the best one and the one that everybody feels will work. The good thing typically is that this is a very wooded ravine, so you know, trees and tree roots tend to help stabilize. So the hope is that this, there won't be any issues here, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, question. Marty, Greg, from past experience, as I recall, we've had really good experience with new septic systems on the bluff, replace older systems. And noting that the buyer is going to have to beware that there's a potential issue associated with, with the cliff there, and then noting that the township has approved It sounded to me like it's a worthwhile endeavor.
Yeah, as I said, it's, it's the best solution. Their staff agrees with their, the applicant's designer that it's the best solution. And I think they've talked with them, you know, as I said, the vegetation and the trees and everything help keep those bluffs as stable as they can be. So as long as the owners are mindful not to do a lot of heavy clearing of those areas, hopefully this will work for a long time.
And it's not like Homestead Septic, because this is not their first time doing it, so.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one question. What is the impact of the failure of the septic system?
Mr. Chair Commissioner Hussein, so essentially, when you do a compliance and a lot of these older systems, as I said, it's a trench system, which means it's in the ground. You know, there's, there's questions about, you know, the purpose of the system is to treat the wastewater. So what they test for is to make sure that you have a certain amount of separation between where that wastewater is going in the ground and where the groundwater typically is coming up. So you want that, you don't want the septic system in the groundwater. So right now, the compliance failed for a lack of separation. The new system will be a mound. And what that does is it elevates that rock bed treatment area above the ground and above where the groundwater is. So it helps, essentially helps protect groundwater.
So basically, the impact will be, in case of the failure, the impact will be the pollution of the whole area?
Potentially. I mean, a, a house generates, you know, a couple hundred gallons of wastewater per day. So it's just more that immediate area around the home that potentially could have contaminants. But like I said, with a lot of these older systems, this type of noncompliance is very common. And then they also look at other factors. How susceptible is the groundwater in this area to being contaminated? I think this is a low susceptibility area. So it's a problem that they need to fix over time, but because there's a pending sale here, that they're just looking to fix it right away.
You got a question from the board? I just want to have a comment on that. I feel like in, back in the 60s and the 50s, they built a lot of infield septic systems. On clay sites like this, probably should have been a mound system at the beginning, but they weren't doing that back in the day. So a mound system is probably appropriate way to go, to get it elevated a little bit. Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Anybody that'd like to address the board, I'd like you to come up to the podium, sign and address, and address the board. Come up to the podium. Okay, the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, say nay. The public hearing is closed. And what is your wishes on this?
Mr. Chair, based on the variance criteria listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the requested variance from the required 50-foot bluff setback to install a replacement septic system.
A motion and second to approve the variance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, say nay. Variance has been approved. Last item on the list here is variance for PL number 2023-053, request for variance from the required 30-foot setback to the site of the property line to 17 and a half feet to construct accessory building. Robert and Michelle Whitner, applicant and property owner in Section 32 of Spring Lake Township. And Nathan, you going to provide the report?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
The subject property here, it's located Section 32 of Spring Lake Township. The property, of course, has access there off of Langford Avenue, also, well, Minnesota Highway 13, also known as Langford Avenue. And the property, it's a, it's a 10-acre property, but much of the property is in floodplain. The elevation of it is quite low throughout much of the site. There is a county ditch on the south side of the property. And what the applicants are requesting is a 12.6-foot variance to reduce the required 30-foot side yard setback to 17.4 feet to construct an accessory building. And previously, there was a pole barn housing the applicant's horses on the property. That was along the northern property line. And the pole barn was approximately 5,000 square feet. It was built back in the 1980s. In the late winter of 2022, the barn was destroyed by fire. And the owners contacted builder. They got constructing a, some horse shelters in the pasture. And it was not until May 24, 2023, so over a year later, that the builder applied to construct a new, nearly 5,000-square-foot pole building at the same location. And Section 3-3 of the Scott County zoning ordinance are regulations on nonconforming structures. They require that a residential legal nonconforming structure, if it is damaged by any cause to the extent of 50% or more of its current market value and no building permit has been applied for within 180 days, when the structure was damaged, it shall be removed and a construction thereafter shall be in compliance with the ordinance. And so if they had applied within that 180 days, they could have done so without a variance. Because of this lapse of time, the variance is required. The applicant has stated that they were not able to apply for a building permit within that 180 days. There was some issues with the insurance companies, supply chain disruptions, miscommunications with builder, a variety of different things. They've also noted that there's an expense and impracticality of moving the structure farther from the property line is involved, moving, there's a concrete pad, there's fences. There also immediately to the south side of the building is a septic tank for the building. And so felt it was not practical to, to do that, the variance, to rebuild in the same location as before. And the site does pose a number of different challenges, partly because there is so much floodplain throughout the, the property. This is really on the highest point of the site. And Scott County Environmental Services, they did review this request, and they do not have any issues with this variance request. It's found that the previous owner installed that holding tank to serve the previous barn without a permit. And so the applicant has been discussing this and working this through with the Environmental Services Department. And they've hired a septic designer to apply for a permit for the tank. That tank permit just needs to be approved before, I'm sorry, do you have the permit now? And so that's the last kind of remaining thing, just needs to be done before the building permit would be issued. And so Scott County Natural Resources Department has also reviewed this application. And they do not have any concern with the variance request itself. They do note that there needs to be, this is federal FEMA terminology here, a LOMA, a letter of map amendment regarding the floodplain will be needed for the proposed structure because of the placement in what is now mapped floodplain. And a LOMA would be needed before the building is, is final. And Spring Lake Township has recommended approval of the request. And the recommendation forms were provided near folders here at the beginning of the meeting. They also had a statement in there about respectfully requesting that the permanent process be expediated. And based on the criteria for granting a variance, staff is recommending approval of the request. The applicants are here tonight, if you have any questions for them.
Any questions from the board regarding this request for variance? And this is a public hearing. Anybody like to address the board regarding this variance? Not? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
What?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, say nay. Public hearing is closed. And your wishes regarding this variance?
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for granting a variance from the required 30-foot setback to the side property line to 17.4 feet, to construct-
An accessory building. Also recognizing that the neighbor who would be affected by this property line is in support of this variance.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve this variance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, nay. Variance has been approved.
The horses can have a place to stand.
That's right. The horses can have a bed.
Brad, is there anything else for the board?
There is not.
You have a motion to close the board of adjustment?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A second?
I'll second.
Motion to close the board of adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not in favor, nay. Board of adjustments closed. Turning it over to planning.
Good evening and welcome to the August 14, 2023 Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting. I call this meeting to order this time. And our first item is our agenda and our roll call.
Commissioner Hussein.
Present.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Von Hoff.
Here.
Commissioner Henches.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Thank you. Also, at the end of the podium is Brad Davis, our planning manager. Next to him is Rachel Knobush, our deputy clerk to the board. In the audience is Nathan Hall, our associate planner, Greg Wagner, our senior planner, Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator. And over on this side of the room, we have Tom Wolf, our county commissioner. Good evening, Mr. Wolf. Our next item is the approval of the July 10, 2023 Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. The commissioners have all been sent copies of the minutes, had opportunity to review them. Are there any corrections, deletions, additions to the minutes as printed? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion at this time to approve the July 10, 2023-
Mr. Chair, we approve the July 10 minutes as written.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Commissioner Henches. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes are approved. Before I move forward here, there is one item I would like to announce at this time. The interim use permit amendment for Shockley Sand LLC to receive the reclamation grading plan has been continued to the September 11, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. So if you're here for that item, that meeting has, or that has been continued until the September 11 meeting. I know that there will be a staff member out in the hall if you have further questions at this time about that. So I just wanted to make that announcement. That's the last item on our agenda today, but I didn't want to have to have you sit through the meeting if you came for that item. The next item is our consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda this evening at this time. All items on the consent agenda are considered by the planning commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a planning commission board member or public member so requests, in which event, the item will be moved from the consent agenda to be considered separately. At this time, I will open the consent agenda portion of our meeting. It's a public meeting. And the first item is number 2023-053, request for preliminary plant and final plant of Tang and States consisting of two lots on 6.226 acres, Tang and Living Trust, applicant and Daniel L. Tang and property owner in Section 10 of New Market Township. Would anyone in the public or any commissioners or anyone in the room actually like to have that removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? Okay. The second item I have is item 2022-063, request for a conditional use amendment to operate a farm market meat processing facility, Annan Barbari, applicant and property owner in Section 17 of Blakely Township. Would anyone like to have that item removed from the consent agenda? Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion from the board to approve both of these items on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve both of the items that are listed under the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. Is there any further discussion? At this time, both those items will be approved if the board votes it. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved. Both items on the consent agenda have been approved. Our next item is a public hearing, request for detached accessory dwelling unit, Vladimir Shepiloff, is applicant and property owner in Section 11 of Spring Lake Township. See, Mr. Hall is making the staff report this evening on our public hearing. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. And this, as we did discuss this earlier, I'll shorten a little bit of the presentation, but go over some of the main things. The, the property here, it's on Rice Lake, it's in Spring Lake Township. The property has access off of Panama Avenue. It is a 12-acre property in the urban expansion reserve district. And the applicants are requesting an interim use permit for a detached accessory dwelling unit to add to their property. The accessory dwelling unit is a secondary living space. It can be permitted on a parcel for a family member or for a caregiver. And in this instance, the applicant is requesting the accessory dwelling unit for their mother-in-law to live on the property with the family. Vladimir Shepiloff is proposing a one-bedroom ADU. And the applicant indicates an email that, to staff, that when the ADU is no longer occupied by his mother-in-law, it would be converted into a workshop space. And the structure has approximately 1,020 square feet, subtracting bathrooms, hallways, closets, et cetera. The total habitable area is within the allowable maximum of 800 habitable square feet. One other thing to note, though, is that an ADU on the property, it is also just considered an accessory building as any other detached garage or other accessory building would be. And so they do need to all fall within that 5,000 square feet maximum. So the total needs to still meet that 5,000 square foot maximum. We'll get into that in a little bit here. Scott County Environmental Services Department has reviewed the request, and they know that the existing system is designed for a four-bedroom house. And so there would need to be either expansion existing system or a new build system, or that would be something that the applicant needs to work out with a septic designer. And that's something that would need to be figured out and a design reached for that before the building permit would be approved. Now, at the July 10 Planning Advisory Commission meeting, there was some written comment provided by a neighboring property owner regarding noise at the site and possible construction company being operated from the property. On July 14, Scott County staff visited the subject property, found no evidence of construction company being operated nor any evidence of unpermitted construction. And I'll give a little more context here, I guess, to the neighbors' concerns. So the, the property, subject property is right here, it's 12 acres. The, the ones who, who provided comment to the, to the planning commission are down here. There's actually two properties here that are owned by different members of the same family, and they do share a common driveway off of Panama Avenue. So that may help with understanding some of the comments that are made here. So we met with, met with the applicant's son-in-law on the property on the 14th. We went throughout the subject property and were looking for any kind of violations or things that relate to the neighbor's concerns about the property. And within the subject property itself, we did not see anything there that would be indicative of a construction company being operated, a business being operated from the site, or unpermitted construction. We did find a couple of other concerns with the property. One is the cargo containers that are being kept on the property. You can kind of see them in the aerial imagery. And that is something that we're seeing quite a bit of in Scott County, but that's not something that's permitted under Scott County zoning ordinance. And so there is a condition that's been proposed in this interim use permit that it would be reviewed for termination if found to have those containers on the property. So they need to make a plan for removing those. And it was also found that there are a couple of chicken coops on the property. on the property. And, um, because of their small size, these coops did not require building permits or zoning permits. Uh, we don't have a small structure zoning permit anymore. However, only one coop is exempted. One shed or in this case, a chicken coop, up to two hundred square feet is exempt from the five thousand square foot maximum, uh, accessory building area. And so one of them would be counted. And so, uh, that needs to be addressed in, uh, their ADU, um, by limiting the size of that and trimming off some of the size of that, or by, uh, perhaps just moving, moving the chicken coop to the neighboring property or, or some other solution. Um, and so there's septic permit and, uh, accessory building size issues. Uh, these aren't, um, e- exactly directly related to the interim use permit. These are, um, issues that we do address all the time through the building permit process. Uh, Spring Lake Township has recommended approval of the request and Scott County staff is, uh, recommending approval of the request, uh, subject to the criteria and the conditions listed in the staff report. Um, I will note also, Mr. Chair, that the, uh, public hearing was closed at the previous meeting. Um, but, uh, if you have any questions for the applicant, uh, they are represented here tonight. Uh, the neighbor who provided comment, uh, earlier, um, stated they had, uh, some, they emailed me here, uh, earliest afternoon and stated they had some very important things come up today and won't be able to attend the meeting tonight. Uh, they asked, uh, please keep us posted. We would still like it to continue to be single-family zoned, uh, as it is currently zoned. Um, that's their, uh, request. Um, one point of clarification for, uh, the Planning Advisory Commission is that this would not, uh, change the zoning of the property. It would continue to be, uh, urban expansion reserve, uh, is the underlying zoning district. Um, and that, uh, these accessory dwelling unit regulations were adopted in the twenty-ten, uh, zoning ordinance update, uh, after research, discussion, workshops with the, um, then eleven townships. And the Planning Advisor Commission, uh, residents had requested some alternative living arrangements for elderly parents, uh, grown children that may have constraints on their living arrangements. So.
Okay.
But, um, that, uh, presentation, I'll certainly stand by, uh, for any questions or-
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hall. There probably be additional questions. And if the board has any questions for the applicant, they can also ask them. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair. Let me, uh, just understand some, um, and I may, this is maybe in the report, but this, this dwelling that they want to build, who's going to live in that?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, the dwelling is being proposed for the applicant's mother-in-law.
Right. And is she a caregiver or are they giving care to her?
Uh, my understanding is it's somebody that is in need of, of care.
She's in need of care. So, okay. Um, you mentioned containers that would have to be removed. I didn't hear what kind they were. They're just containers?
Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, they would be, uh, uh, shipping containers, the kind of, uh, car containers, uh, that you'd typically see, um, on, uh, the rail, you know, uh, the trains as they come through town, uh, the stackable, uh, containers.
And then finally, have you been in touch, uh, with the person who's complained previously? Has, had they made any communications to you since then?
They, uh, um, uh, Commissioner Robbins, they, uh, they did provide, um, an email update with some of those comments. That was on, um, that was attached to the staff report. I'm just. Uh, that was on, uh, July thirty-first. They sent that updated email, uh, in the staff report. All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chair. But we had addressed. It sounds to me as if we have addressed all these questions that were raised by the neighbor, correct? By the subsequent invest, uh, inspection. Those have all been addressed.
Right. Uh, yep, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Henches, uh, yes. So the, the items that were brought up by the, the neighbor, uh, we have to of the property. We are satisfied that those, uh, those are not concerns that need to be addressed.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, Nathan, you were talking about two different, uh, families on the property. There's two properties with the family. Each one, they just share a driveway. So that's a perceived issue.
Correct, Commissioner. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Watson.
Mr. Chair, um, just to recap, so we've identified the noise issue and that is not a non-issue at this point. Correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Watson, we, we did not see anything that, um, would demonstrate there was a noise issue or anything that ca- is causing noise there.
And do we have a timeline to remove the containers? They're, they're a good size. They're going to re- require a pretty healthy truck to come in here and take those out.
Commissioner Watson, we have, uh, not, w- we have informed the applicant that they do need to be removed and, uh, but we have not talked about a specific date or a specific, uh, timeline for that.
And the chicken coop will reduce down to one.
Commissioner Watson, they will need to, um, uh, determine how they're going to meet that requirement, uh, to meet that five thousand square feet. That will have to be either you reducing some of the size of the proposed ADU or removing the chicken coop. Um, so that is something that will need, the applicant will need to determine how they-
And the county has the, uh, staff to go out there to ensure that these activities do take place.
Yes, Commissioner Watson, we, uh, we have co-compliance staff, but also, uh, of course, this will be going through the building permit process. And so we'll review it more closely at that time.
Mr. Chairman, Nathan, are we allowed to ask a question of the applicant if he's here?
Yes.
I'd like to ask a question of the applicant.
Could you come up to the podium and, and just, uh, there is, is there a sign-up sheet here?
There, yeah.
There's a little sign-up sheet there. Please sign in and just, uh, just start with your name and, yeah.
Um, I'm Dennis Koleschuk. I'm actually the neighboring. So Vladimir Shepilov is my father-in-law. Um, I guess what questions would you guys have that I could answer for you? I mean, I can mostly answer everything that you guys asked. Um, the shipping containers, those will-
Can-
Yes.
Let me just ask you the two questions, as long as you're here, that Commissioner Watson addressed. Are, do you have plans in place to remove the shipping containers? And what are you going to do with the chicken coop?
So the shipping containers, he purchased those when he was building the home, just to store lumber, windows and all that during construction because he started it in the winter. Um, and they've just been left sitting there. So he's eventually going to move them. Um, if you guys need an exact timeframe, we can get that to you. I mean, they are empty. There's one that's like half full. Uh, the chicken coop, one chicken coop that we're working on right now to kind of just move over the chickens. And then we're just going to take the chicken coop that is movable over to my property. And then that's about it. So, because technically one ch- chicken coop is mine, but we just have it in the same area, just so it makes life easier. That's about it.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Hussein.
So I have another question.
Yes.
Regarding that noise mitigation part. Uh, so the noise, uh, have you made sure that the noise in this write-up that, the, uh, right about the project, uh, you mentioned that the noise is probably coming from the construction company that is, uh, close by?
So to answer your question, because we hear these noises too every single day. It's not coming from us. Um, it's queen bees. Um, so the neighboring Nancy, um, going down our south, it's like, it's a flower shop and they have tractors running all day, moving dirt. They have, um, sheep, animals. So they're moving food for them and all that. But there's, I mean, I personally own a bobcat myself, but that's just for like personal use. That's, I mean, there's nothing that's, you know, I mean, Nathan was there. There's grass growing everywhere. There's, there's no digging. There's nothing like that going on right now. So.
So, um, it's a rather question to Nathan, uh, that, uh, this, uh, how did you make sure that, uh, this noise is from the construction company, uh, which is nearby, which has nothing to do with the property of the, uh, subject here? Uh, the neighbor that is complaining about this noise is from another source, not from this property owner. Uh, have you made sure that that is the case or?
Yep. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hussein, the, um, uh, noise is a, is a difficult thing to determine sometimes where it's, where it's coming from. But, uh, when we look at the subject property, uh, we do not see, um, uh, equipment parked out there or different kinds of, uh, things that would suggest that there is, um, some sort of, uh, illicit activity or unauthorized sort of business or something there that would be creating, uh, noise, uh, that would impact the neighborhood.
So this, uh, this explanation, does it satisfy the neighbor who has complained about it?
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Hussein, uh, I believe the, um, the, the neighbor was not, uh, able to be here tonight, uh, to, to speak to that. Uh, my understanding is that they still had some concerns about, uh, the project that they noted in their, uh, most recent email. Um, but, um, uh, as staff, as we've reviewed the property, we don't, um, we did not determine there to be any, any concerns that we could, noise issues that we could identify.
So what, what, what did you do when the neighbor complained about this noise? So did you do, did you just went there and inspected the, the place and, uh, came out and satisfied yourself rather than satisfying the neighbor, uh, about the noise that is there? That, that is what is being done here? Or, uh, is there communication, any communication between, uh, the neighbor and you after you visited the place?
Yep. Uh, Commissioner Hussein, um, yeah, so, uh, we did not, um, do any kind of, you know, something like a noise study at the site or, um, um, uh, but, uh, we did go through the property. We did not hear any noise, um, any kind of noise generation issues there at the time that we were there, uh, on the site. And, um, we did not see anything else, um, uh, like a, a business or something like that that would be creating, um, a lot of noise. And so, um, that was something that, uh, that, that's kind of the, uh, extent of our, our, uh, review of that.
I think if I can just jump into, Commissioner Hussein, we did get a, a comment letter that there was a lot of noise and construction activity on the site. We went and, the staff went and investigated. We didn't see any proof of that. We have to keep in mind that what we're dealing with here is an application for an accessory dwelling unit, which, um, is what we really need to decide on. In the future, if there is, continues to be alleged noise and construction activity, staff will go back out there and address it. But it's a little bit separate from an accessory dwelling unit that we're being asked to consider here.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
If I could, Commissioner Hussein, I live in the country and noise carries. And I will tell you that five times out of ten, I can't figure out where it's coming from. It's really, really difficult when you're really out in the country, if you're hearing noise, to be, really be able to pinpoint where it's coming from. And we, we've done an inspection to go see what was there. And the other thing is the neighbor is writing, but is not willing to show up and meet us here and, and give us his concerns in person. So I hope this helps. I really feel like it's been adequately addressed. I hear your concerns, but I, I really think that we've done all we can do.
My only concern was, uh, that, uh, now that the neighbor has complained.
Yes.
So have we, yeah, at the, at the county level, done anything to satisfy that neighbor, to, to address, uh, that neighbor's, um, concern and to convey it to them? That, that is, that is my question and that is my concern, that we have be addressed the concern of the neighbor.
Right.
Conveyed it to him too.
Right. Okay. And well established. Uh, go ahead, the applicant wants to-
If I could say something, I think in the last email also I saw, um, that she wrote to Nathan that there is, um, heavy equipment rolling in and out of the property. I am working on landscaping right now. So I did order rock for bed gardens and all that. Um, I actually ordered class five because my driveway is not done since construction. I mean, you know, the road is being washed out and, you know, whatever. So I ordered class five to, you know, spread it out again, you know, like keep up with everything. So it's not like I have trucks constantly coming in and out. And she might catch it where, hey, I got a truck coming in and it's backing into the property because it has nowhere to turn around on the property. So from the road, and once those dump trucks start backing up, they're beeping. So I think that's where she's hearing maybe some of the, like, noises, I guess, from. But I mean, you guys come out and inspect, I have a pile of rock that I'm working on right now to, you know, put in my bed gardens, finishing up landscaping. Because we just finished building two, but I mean, six acres to take care of. And I got four kids, little ones running around and I'm trying to figure everything out and get everything done too. So maybe that's, she's probably hearing that too at the same time. So I mean, that's another email.
So do you have all your deliveries of rock?
Yes. So-
So now it's just spreading it that-
Yeah, it's just spreading it. And I, that's what my bobcats for to, you know, spread the rock. Yeah, I just had-
Do you think that that possibly could be what the neighbor might have been hearing?
Probably. And I just, what was it? Uh, a month ago, I had the patio port in my backyard. So I had cement trucks driving to the backyard. I mean, it's ongoing, trying to finish a property that, you know, I've been working on for two years. So that's maybe the noise that she is hearing. I'm not here to hide anything. So.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yeah, um, do you, when you do all of this, do you do it during the day?
Yes, sir.
You don't do it like at seven at night?
My, my kid's going to be washed and bed by six.
I, I just wanted to ask that for the record. Thanks.
Or early in the morning.
Or early in the morning.
I, I sleep until ten.
Okay. Thank you.
So, and, and just so we're clear on this, and, and, and this is perhaps more for the neighbor, but this is not a zoning change. And an accessory dwelling unit is under specific conditions. It can only be a family member. And, and it only goes as long as a family member's there. You can't, like, rent it out or do something else with it. So we're not putting another residence down. And this is a very critical thing for people to understand because this is single-family dwelling.
Mm-hmm.
And it's just an accessory to that. And, and I'm sure your, um, parents-in-law understand this, that this is how the law runs with this, correct?
Yeah. So my wife and my mother-in-law, they're actually caregivers to their mom. So they're, they work for a, I think it's PCA company who they actually take care of her.
Right.
Well, they're, she's just getting to an age where she needs more care and she needs to be around.
Sure.
So that's the only reason why. So.
Okay. So, and that's the whole purpose for this whole ADU.
Yes, sir.
And, and it's important that you understand that it's the applicant's representative, but also perhaps that the neighbors understand this. And I think this is part of the thing that we talked about this when we enacted this, um, uh, accessory dwelling units for, for properties, is that people understand that it's not putting another residence on the property. It's putting something that's accessory to the primary residence. And there has to be a relationship there.
Correct.
And, and, um, that goes with the relationship. It has to be a family member or something. And there's specific conditions for that, just so that the applicant fully understands that. And then the neighbors understand that well, that we're not changing the character of the neighborhood or that, that this is something that, you know, that that goes with the accessory dwelling. So just so that's understood.
Yeah, I think she's just upset because I did place, like, even though she's trying to, I, all of her complaints are towards the neighboring part, uh, property, which this meeting is about. Um, I think she's, I'm more involved in it in her emails, you know, because I said it, like, last one, that I said my house all the way in the backyard and thirty feet from the property line. And she doesn't like that. I mean, that's really what it is. But, I mean, we're trying to keep everybody happy. So.
Right. And that's what we want to see.
Right. Uh, Mr. Chair, if I just could, uh, when, when does this end? When's the end of this? When will everything be done?
My property or are we talking about one-seven-seven-four-zero?
I think we're talking about the accessory unit.
Um, as we're hoping, I mean, it's only a thousand square feet. So probably that max six, seven months. You know, we are going into winters. It might slow things down.
Right.
With frost and all that. But, I mean, we're going to try and get it-
This slab construction.
Yes, it's on, it's slab. There's no basement, just nothing. So.
Any other questions for the applicant or for Mr. Hall at this time? Okay. Thank you very much for, uh, answering the questions.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And thank you, Mr. Hall. Uh, and at this time, I will entertain, uh, a motion for action or?
I make a motion. Oh.
It's not open for discussion. Public hearing is, is, uh, was closed at the last meeting. Sir, uh, was there something specific that you wanted to add? Well, I just, I'm the only-
Well, I just, I'm the owner, the neighbor that butts up to his property.
Okay.
And which...
Sir, why don't you come up to the podium, and, sorry.
My name is Kevin Mahold, and my property butts up against his property, and I'm the only homeowner in the area that can see the houses on his property, they're, otherwise they're back in the trees.
Right.
And as far as the noise issue, that's not an issue.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we live in the country, I've got a bobcat, I'm doing stuff, all the neighbors are doing stuff, and the noise has never been an issue coming from anybody, including the nursery, that's right on 23 there.
Right.
So, my question is, which property is the unit going on?
That, well, when you say your house is next to the property, can you see the red outline property? I don't know if you're looking, is that the same thing we're looking at?
Yes, I can see that.
And your house is on, is on Panama...
My, my house is off of Panama Lane.
Right.
Not Panama Avenue.
Oh, Panama Lane?
Right. It's a little gravel road.
Yeah, if you can show them, Nathan, exactly where the house, where the accessory unit's going to be, right next to this house, right here.
Down here is your house?
My house is right on the corner of 180th and Panama Lane, so...
180th?
Property here, and here's where I butted up against...
Yeah, no, it's on the other side of that house, show them where the, the ADU is going to be.
So there's, yeah, there's, there's two houses.
Yep.
This is, I believe, one of the new home, the newest home, and the other one is here.
Yeah.
So...
So, from your house, how many acres do you have down there?
About seven.
Yeah, it's, it's on the other side of the existing house, almost from your house, so that existing house, it's on the...
So it's, it's going on your father, or father-in-law's property then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, the only thing I would say is, my wife and I have lived there 51 years, since we built our home, we've gotten to know all our neighbors, we've never met our neighbors, they've been there for a while, they've put a gate up outside both their properties, so it's kind of like it's a compound, and none of the neighbors seem to have met you guys yet, so.
Well, here's a great opportunity.
That goes a long way.
Not this place.
That's all I would say, the noise is not an issue.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, thank you.
I mean, it might be your grandkids that drive around with all cars, I mean, and they always come in our front, we don't have any issues, and there's a trail that runs on Nancy's around.
Right.
Never had issues.
Okay, well, like I say, it's a good opportunity to meet people here, thank you for your comments.
You bet.
Okay, at this time...
I'll take a motion to approve the request.
Thank you, Commissioner Pika, I have a motion to approve the request.
I'll second.
And I second by Commissioner Hitchens, is there any further discussion before I call for a vote?
This is for the approval of the interim use permit, right?
Yes.
Just to clarify, okay, very good.
All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Request has been approved, thank you very much. Our next item is our planning manager's report, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll run down the items that you recommended approval and sent them onto the county board. So on July 11th, the county board did approve the rezone from A1 to A3, that was the Meyer Bachtel applicant and living trust in Blakely Township. They also approved the rezone of about 80 acres from A1 to A3, Gary and Ruth Paul were the applicants and property owners. Finally, they approved the final plat of Malkerson Edition and the developers' agreement that went along with that in Louisville Township. July 18th, they approved the conditional use permit for an electric substation, Dakota Electric was the applicant that was on this Zewir property down in New Market Township. They approved the conditional use permit to operate a microbrewery taproom and event space down in Blakely, the Hamlet of Blakely in Blakely Township. And they, speaking of ADUs, they approved the interim use permit for a detached accessory dwelling unit, Dan and Teresa Skudloczek was the applicant and property owners in Cedar Lake Township. Then earlier this month, on August 1st, they approved the rezone preliminary final plat for Rice Lake Estates in New Market Township. Another item, since our workshop last month, I know the direction coming out of that workshop was to recommend a moratorium on the sale of cannabis products, the county board has decided not to do a moratorium. The reason they gave that direction was they feel that the state law prohibits any business from operating until January of 2025, and they feel like that inherently builds in time for us to get our ordinances and rules up to date, and they felt like a moratorium was, they used the word window dressing, it really wouldn't accomplish anything because you can't do it anyways, was the feeling of our commissioners. And so they said, instead of spending time coming up with a public hearing notice and doing all the paperwork to do a moratorium, they advised staff to use that time to just start working on getting your ordinances updated. So we will proceed with that direction, I'll probably call for another workshop this fall, once we start seeing more information coming from the state of where we can go with our zoning, and continue to work in that, I know you also provided me some good direction on maybe reaching out to some other counties, learn from them, so we'll proceed with that, moratorium or not, I always wanted to spend time really coming up with some good rules, so I'll start working on that as well, and find a good time this fall to do that workshop.
Mr. Chair, if I could, so, just to clarify, right now, there's not going to be a moratorium, but there isn't going to be any distribution or use of cannabis in Scott County, is that right?
Until the state license these operations, and the, the date that they've provided is that could begin January of 2025.
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
So we have the rest of this year and 2024 to get our ordinances in place.
So that's for retail and, and commercial?
All the, it was all the uses...
The other things people can possess and...
Oh, yes, sorry.
And grow individually outside of commercial, so we're talking about regulating commercial activity.
All right, so then, let me, if, if I wanted to, I could grow cannabis in, in Scott County, and I could have cannabis.
Right.
I couldn't sell it, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification, it's those uses that we talked about last month, the micro businesses, the meso businesses, the retailers, the grow, grow operations, those are all considered commercial uses that cannot operate until...
Are there any national planning organizations that have looked at this, that, because like Oregon and California, and Colorado for years have gone through this, that, if, or any guidance on this, and that's, I guess, let's look at best practices and try and do something that's the best, that doesn't have to reinvent the wheel.
They do, and we certainly have a lot of that documentation, what best practices are. I believe what I'm seeing come from the state is the state wants to use these best practices before they even issue a license, so I think we got to kind of keep an eye on what are they going to require...
Right.
And not be redundant at what we would require at the local level.
And, and where will that come out, will that come out legislature, or aren't they making an office that is directly with this?
They're standing at the Office of Cannabis Management, maybe?
Okay.
I don't remember the name, but that is going to be the office that will come with the model ordinances, that'll be the office that will do the licensing. Yep, so that's an update on the moratorium, I, I think a few of our cities have come to a similar conclusion, I'm not convinced, like I was a month ago, that every city will have a moratorium, I'm hearing that there are a few cities that have come to the same conclusion, that if nothing can happen until 2025, what's the moratorium really doing, other than just messaging, I guess, on it?
Right.
So...
Have you had inquiries?
I shared that one last month, and since then, I've seen another alert come out from our CDA, a business looking for, I think, five acres, similar type of request.
Just real general, except that's not...
Yeah, but nothing specific that we've been talking to. That's it for an update.
Great, anything else for the cause? Thank you very much to everyone, and I'll entertain a motion at this time to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hitchens, do I have a second?
Full second.
Second by Commissioner Pika, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much.